Well, at it.
Here we go.
Live and local talk from the mind behind the Overton Report. It's time for Palmetto Talk Live with your host Cory Allen. Now, your host Cory Allen.
Welcome, everybody. It is. Still figuring out the kings. What's up, everybody? Cory Allen here with the Overton Report and this is Palmetto Talk Live. Here we are. It's Monday, second week of this new iteration of Palmetto Talk Live. Really excited for it. We, you know, we got a lot to talk about today. I was at the No Kings protests in North Charleston. Earlier this weekend. Very interesting stuff and I've got, you know, I did a couple of interviews, spoke to some people. And still have no idea what they were really upset about. Thankfully, we all woke up today and there's still not a king in America. So really, really good stuff. We are joined right now, something more hyper local. The Charleston County, or City of Charleston, rather. Elections are coming up. City Council members are running and we are with Annette Begner. How's it going?
Good morning Cory. It's going great. I'm so glad to be here this morning. I love your new studio.
It's, yeah, it's, you know, it's coming together.
It is.
We're building stuff. We've, we've still got, we've got a bunch of stuff to put on the walls. But we haven't, you know, we had to deal with all the ten thousand dollars in equipment first.
Oh, I understand.
Stuff. So I want to, you know, you're running for city council in Charleston.
Yes.
And, and James Island.
Right.
Is it all James Island?
No, it's, it's District 12 and James Island's a little different than everyone realizes. Because you've got the part that is the residents that live on James Island, but their address is Charleston. So they've got the benefits of the city sewer water, things like that. Then you've got, yes. And then you've got the town of James Island, which is their own little municipality.
Okay, so it's not all of James Island, but is District 12 only James Island?
Yes.
Okay, it's just not all of it. There's some of it that's, that's not been incorporated, I guess, annexed, yeah.
Right.
Um, I know that there are a lot of, well, a lot of voices that don't want to be in that town especially annexed necessarily. Sorry. There we go. But as far as, as far as the portion that, that you cover, how many people do you think it is?
Well, the last time I heard in on the town of James Island, around forty thousand, I believe.
Okay.
Um, I don't have the updated number for District 12. Um, I've been kind of hyper focused in on the voters.
Sure.
What that number is.
I just want probably about two thirds of that. That's, that's almost as, that's about as much as any state representative has. I guess that's, that's why I was, uh, that's why I was curious about that. And I know you've been knocking doors a lot.
Yes.
Uh, like a lot.
A lot.
More. From what I've, from what I've heard, actually more than most have ever. But I, I, I'm curious as to what the voters and what the, the, the constituents in District 12. What are some of the things that you're hearing the most about?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, um, it's a pleasure to go knocking on the doors and to meet my voters. They, there are people that have just moved in, like I talked to a family that just moved in yesterday. And they're gonna get out and vote for me. Uh, I've talked to people who have lived here for twenty or thirty years and have seen, you know, everyone moving in and have seen the flooding issues and watched the crumbling infrastructure. And they're all basically saying the same thing, you know, we want our infrastructure fixed. We want our potholes filled. We want the flooding to stop. It's just basic things Cory. That's not asking for much, honestly.
Well.
And you can tell it's been neglected, just driving through there. It's been neglected for decades.
Johns Island and James Island, it seems, have definitely been the redheaded stepchild.
Yes.
Of a lot of this. They've, uh, they've had their lands annexed over the course of the past, I don't know, two decades maybe. And their taxes have gone to the city of Charleston. And I, I know that many of them feel and have felt for a long time that they, uh, well, that their, that their money is not coming back to them and they're not getting any of the benefit. Because like you said, I mean, well, the, the traffic is insane, I mean insane. And look, all of us, many of us have driven twenty-six during rush hour, one direction or the other. That is like nothing compared to what these people deal with. You get off at five, five P M. And you're not getting home till seven thirty.
Yeah.
It's, and, and you're only trying to drive like fifteen miles. The, these things are crazy. And I know that, well, I guess, what, what can you do as a city council person? Uh, obviously you, you can't necessarily snap your fingers, right? And, and give the money or get the work done.
Right.
Which is more important than the money. The money is obviously always there. There's just no will. It seems from whoever's in charge, but that, it, it, what can, what can you as a city council person do there?
Well, you know, I mean, the reason that I'm running for city council is because I believe that James Island and Charleston as a whole deserves leadership. That's strong and determined and dedicated. And someone who's not afraid to back down from everyday issues or big issues. And, and that's me. And I, I plan to prioritize the repair and improvement to the crumbling infrastructure. And I plan on addressing the flooding head on, saying, hey, our residents have put this many tax dollars in over the past ten years. How much of that money has come back to the residents of James Island? That's what I want to know. And, you know, I want to also review some contracts and some procurement processes to ensure that they're competitive and cost effective. So those are some things I can do. And also I want to work with whoever I need to work with to get the traffic lights in sync, so that traffic can flow better.
City planner would be great.
Because, I mean, it's kind of crazy. I, I drive and I'm just like, this light needs, you know, re-timed here. This isn't working very well. And that's something that, you know, squeaky wheel gets the grease, right?
Yeah.
I tend to be the squeaky wheel on plenty of things.
So basically, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems, it seems like the city council member, when it comes to, uh, the roads, especially highways, things like that. It seems to me that the city council member, if they have, uh, good relationships with the people at the state level or at the county level. You can be that voice for the constituents, right? Because the constituents, you know, they'll call and they'll, they'll beg and they'll plead, but and, and you know, this is maybe a feat, a feature or a flaw of the system as it, as it, as it stands right now in South Carolina that we all have to work under, but you, like, like I said, you, you can't as a city council person do it, but you can. Uh, you said, you said be the squeaky wheel, right?
Right.
But really what that means is you can speak on behalf of the constituents who elect you to those who are in charge of this, right?
Absolutely.
So.
I mean, most of the funding for the roads, the infrastructure and things like that comes from the county and the state. They're the ones that have to sign on the dotted line to get it done. But I have all these relationships and I know how to work with people to, you know, maybe be the project coordinator to get us all together because there are state roads, there are county roads. There's all kinds of municipalities and government entities that we have to work through on James Island because it's so unique. And I could be that person that works with everyone, including the town of James Island, to get these things done.
Okay, so, oh, that's interesting because like you were saying, there, there's a town of James Island that is not annexed, that is its own entity. And, and the willingness to work with them. Uh, you think that that could help?
It's imperative. I mean, I don't want to say, hey, I just want to fix my district and then the rest of you that live on James Island across the street, sorry.
Yeah, screw y'all.
Exactly. I mean, I am here to serve the people and I don't care who you are. You know, if you've paid taxes and you contribute to, contribute to society, you know, let me help. I'm here to serve Cory. That's what I'm here to do.
Well, even driving, driving to work, driving to work. Uh, yeah, because they, even the, the people of towns, uh, of James Island and the township are still driving through the city to get to work, the, by and large, most of them, yeah.
And I'm all about transparency and accountability. I mean, you know, it's the power of the community.
Well, with that being said, um, I'd like to, I'd like to, I, I think that people like to know who they're voting for. So tell us a little bit about, uh, about who you are. Where you, you know, where you come from, what you, uh, what, what drew you here to Charleston, to James Island specifically? And, and why you decided that you needed to, to, to run for this office. I know that you've done, just to, to kind of lead you off into this, uh, you've, you've run a couple of campaigns for people. You've been an event organizer. So you've been, and I know that organizing events when you're, for example, if, if, like, if you're a wedding planner dealing with a lot of family members who all hate each other, right?
I don't do weddings.
Oh, okay. So, so just, but, but planning events is not an easy thing. There, there are always personalities you have to deal with and, and bring them together and negotiate multiple things. Tell us a little bit about, uh, about your past and what makes you the, uh, the candidate.
You know Cory, we can't help where we're born, right? So.
Well, no, yeah.
I was born in Illinois. The, the second that my family and I had a chance to get out of there, we chose South Carolina to be our home, like many people that live here. I, I chose, we chose Charleston because of the history here and the beauty here. And the school district where we originally were at, you know, for my daughter to finish high school. Um, I got very involved in Charleston County politics and decided to bring my event planning business down here. So I got really involved in, um, first, you know, doing clubs, doing volunteering, as I've always been a civil servant.
When you say clubs, you don't mean like dance clubs?
No, political clubs.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Um, I, I actually, I must say, um, within a month or two moving here, um, the parents of my daughter's high school and the admin specifically, you know, um, asked me to run to be their PTA president. So like right when I got here, right off the bat, I was the PTA president of the high school and rejuvenated that for them. Volunteer my time all the time, my whole entire life. Um, so I, I got involved with some clubs and raised some money for candidates in the tri-county area. Um, I've, I've done events, um, for Charleston County Republican Party for presidential cabinet people. So what, wherever there is a big political event, um, I might have something to do with it.
Yeah, you might. And you know, that, it's interesting because I'm, I'm looking at the, the people who have endorsed you. The current, uh, city councilwoman for James Island, Caroline Parker.
Yes.
Who, I mean, we've all seen her do great things. We've seen her be, well, and you know, this is something I might want to ask you about, uh, after our next, after our first break, but, uh, she was when she was first elected, it seemed like she was lambasted, I think is probably not even the right word, but they, they came after her and, and it seemed like the media, yes. Oh, yes, it is. The media came at her, the, uh, incumbents came at her, belittled her, kind of dismissed and made fun of her. It was very uh, kind of, it was very gross.
Oh gosh Cory, it's a special kind of hate.
Oh, and I, you know, and I, we saw it firsthand.
People don't get it.
I'm telling you, I, I think you're right. I think you're right. It's beyond cancel culture.
It is, it's awful.
But she has endorsed you. We have, uh, the, the Republican National Committee Woman Cindy Costa, of course. She's endorsed you. Mara Brockbank with the Carolina Republican Coalition. All these people, um, I know, I mean, Woody Norris, Booze Pops. Uh, the, the chairman of the Charleston County Republican Party, Andrew Boucher, the E C, um, Dennis, uh, Dennis, Dennis Brown and the vice chair of the Charleston County Republican Party, Mike Elder, they've all endorsed you. You've got Drew McKissick, the chairman of the South Carolina Republican Party has endorsed you. That is very rare in a city council race.
I know.
What do you, what do you contribute that to? What do you think? Well, I mean, like, like I said, I mean, these are, this is a nonpartisan race. But these people have put their vote of confidence in you. Uh, I, what do, what do you contribute that to?
I, like I said, for the past almost five years, I have worked, I have worked tirelessly for the Republican Party. And I believe in the Republican Party of South Carolina. And they all know me. They all know how hard I work. They all know how dedicated I am and how passionate I am. And they know that I am one of them. And I'm not the one that's gonna back down. I don't back down. That's not in me. It's not who I am.
Yeah, I, I know that you've been dealing with some, uh, gossip, uh, ru- like rumor mill, you know, twelve year old.
Oh, yeah, we're back in seventh grade Cory.
Yeah, no, it's definitely seventh.
Crying out loud.
Lot of middle school nonsense, uh, rumors and things like that. Well, you know, we'll, maybe we'll delve deeper into that. I don't want to necessarily give that a, um, a platform because the people who are spreading those rumors have been trying to get my platform for quite some time now. But guys, we'll be right back after these messages from our sponsors. These, these are people who believe in the show, believe in what we're doing. Support them. If you, if you need to buy or sell a house, if you want to learn how to buy or sell a house, uh, or if you want some t-shirts and hoodies, winter's coming up, Christmas is coming up. These are the people that you really need to, uh, do business with because they're, they're like us. And, and, uh, and they support, they support what we're doing here and we support what they're doing, uh, here in South Carolina. So we'll be back in literally like two minutes.
Tired of shirts that say nothing? At ShopTruthTeas.com, we say everything with satire, sarcasm, and bold pro-freedom designs that get people talking. And the best part, every tee, lady's v-neck and hoodie are one hundred percent made in the USA. Premium fabric, very comfortable and unapologetically American. ShopTruthTeas.com is a family-owned pro-America business focused on wearable truth. Order now at ShopTruthTeas.com. That's ShopTruthTeas.com. Use promo code CoryAllen for fifteen percent off.
For nearly fifty years, the Real Estate School of South Carolina has helped launch thousands of real estate careers. Founded by Charles Brown and carried forward by Chip Brown, our legacy continues, now with a fresh look and even more ways to learn. Choose in-person, virtual, or self-paced classes, all with top instructors and the most complete study package anywhere. Visit realestateschoolofsc.com and start your real estate journey today.
Looking for a Realtor who gets it done and actually answers her phone? Meet Christie Gore with Realty One Group Coastal. Christie is a tri-county top producer. She works hard, keeps you informed, and knows the Charleston tri-county markets inside and out. From Dorchester to Berkeley and everywhere in between, she's helping you buy and sell residential homes with confidence. When other agents let calls go to voicemail, Christie's picking up and already finding your next home. So don't wait. Call eight four three nine nine eight eight two five zero. Or go online to christiescoastalhomes.com where local experience meets real results. We're back with more Palmetto Talk Live. Once again, here's Cory Allen.
All right, guys, we're back and I'm here with, uh, Annette Begner. Uh, if you go to voteannette.com, that's vote A N N E T T E dot com. You can learn more about her platform. She's running in District 12, uh, in, in the city of Charleston. James Island is, is the, uh, area. And I know that a lot of people out there in James Island have a lot of complaints about the way that they've been treated by the city and that's why you need an advocate. You, you had one in Caroline Parker and Caroline Parker, uh, has endorsed Annette. Annette, uh, I know that one of your, well, first off, let's, let's let everybody know today is early voting. Early voting starts right now.
Yes, actually I was out bright and early putting my signs out, um, at the early voting precinct, so.
Have you voted yet?
No, I'm, I'm actually picking my daughter up Friday from USC because she can vote now. She's eighteen.
Okay.
And she's gonna come down here Friday and her and I are gonna go vote together.
Who are you all gonna vote for?
We're voting Annette, baby.
Voteannette.com, that's awesome. So I know that one of your candidates is the wife of the, uh, former chairman of the Charleston County Democrat Party. Is that right?
She sure is.
Do you think that, you think she'll be nonpartisan?
Well Cory, let's be real. It's supposed to be nonpartisan, but we all know it's not nonpartisan.
Well.
There's a big unbalance in the government on city council. We've got nine Democrats and three Republicans.
On a good day.
And I'm fighting for that third seat.
That third seat, that's right.
We need to keep that third seat.
Yes, it, it's been, you, you, you know, the Republicans there have been able to stop some pretty egregious things from happening. And, uh, and if we, if, if it goes to ten two, there's no way. I mean, there's really no way.
No.
You know, we've dealt at the Overton Report, um, and just me in general and a, a number of other activists and groups and conservative and Republican groups. We have dealt with some, we, we, we've dealt over the past years with some really wild stuff with, especially when Tacklenburg was, uh, was the mayor. And I know that this is a, it's, it's supposed to be a nonpartisan race. But again, it's like you say, there's, there's really not anything that's nonpartisan because when you're talking about, when you're talking about tax and spend versus save money and, uh, allocate it correctly. That's, there, there's really not a, and when you're talking about, let's say, the wife of the former chairman of the Democrat Party. There's no reason to think that that person would give anybody who she doesn't deem as a Democrat to be a Democrat, the time of day. As a matter of fact, she, they would probably belittle the, the, the person who comes to them with, with any conservative ideas or ideals.
Oh, absolutely.
With that being said, and you've been endorsed by a lot of Republicans.
I'm proud to be a Republican Cory.
Okay.
I'm a common sense person for God's sakes.
For sure. So, so how, how would you handle it if, uh, if you have, let's say, because, because this happens sometimes, okay, this happens there. Uh, you'll have at a meeting fifteen people who are coming and speaking on behalf of a, let's say a very liberal point of view, okay? Whether it's, uh, you know, well, we won't even get into what it might be about, uh, forcing masks on people or disallowing people who won't take a vaccine from coming into city council, which has happened in the past.
Right, right. And I mean, it could be a big giant thing or just an itty bitty tiny thing and it'll be a big deal.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, fifteen people who are for the liberal idea on the, or the leftist idea on the issue, and five people come to council speaking for the other side. That are your constituents, right? Will you, will you take that to mean that you should go in the direction of the majority of those people because they showed up? Or would you hold firm to your principles and, and make, basically make the decision based on the reason that you were, you assume you were elected because you're gonna be elected by people who have that common sense, right? But we know that, like you said earlier, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Will you allow, would you allow that to happen, um, in, in generally?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay, I am being elected by the people who want common sense leadership. We're all tired of the screaming about nonsense. I don't get attacked on my policy Cory. I don't get attacked because I'm not intelligent. I get told online, I'm ugly, they don't like my hair, you know, I'm this or I'm that. And these lies, they're just tactics. That's what they are. And I'm not, the squeaky wheel is not gonna get the grease, the common sense is gonna get the grease in my case.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, I think that's an important thing for us to, for us to ask really because it seems like sometimes when people get elected, especially at a nonpartisan positions, they end up moving to the people who, who, who are sending them emails en masse, organizing to that effect as opposed to the common sense, the leave me alone guy, who's, who just wants things to be better, but doesn't really uh, see, see political activism as their, their life's goal. And I think that that kind of skews things a lot in, in city council.
Well, I, I do want to assure my voters that I am a force to reckon with. And I don't back down. I believe in the things that are right. I believe in common sense. And I have principles that guide me. I have God that guides me. And that's how I'm gonna make all my decisions.
So Annette Begner, uh, are you the, have you seen the ballot yet? The?
Yes, I'm first on the ballot.
First on the ballot?
I am.
So the first person on the ballot. And if, again, if people want to know more about you, can they reach you on your website as well? Email you and? Uh, so, so tell us that website.
It's voteannette.com. A N, it's V O T E A N N E T T E dot com. And you could contact me on there. Today is the first day of early voting, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote as soon as you can. This is such an important election. We have got to save this seat.
I, I agree with you. This is saving a seat, not even gaining a seat. This is saving one. And you are the only person who has, is even close to Republican and you are Republican.
I'm very Republican.
You are Republican, but the other, the other two running are just way off on the left.
Yes.
And I think that's, uh, I mean, there, there's obviously not even a choice in my, in my view. One more thing, you, uh, you signed a, a permit. This is something that, that's in, still in the minds of a lot of people, including myself. We saw Charleston burn. We watched it burn. Uh, we watched riots, we watched crazy things happen, we watched nobody be held accountable. Uh, and then we watched all over the country as.
We're back with more Palmetto Talk Live. Once again, here's.
Sorry. And we watched as, uh, all across the country, places were, uh, uh, police departments were defunded and, uh, basically castrated. Uh, you signed a pledge recently.
I did.
Uh, can you tell us a, about that?
Yes, yes, I am very proud of this. Of course, I'm the only candidate that has signed this pledge. Um, through Heritage Action for America. And it's the police pledge Cory. And basically what it's saying is that I, Annette Begner, stand with America's police and pledge to oppose any bill, resolution, or movement to defund the police, period.
That seems pretty simple.
It's common sense.
Why do you think you're the only person that's signed?
Cause I'm the only Republican.
Why is that, why is that? It's so crazy to me that that's a partisan situation. It really is. Um, again, guys, early voting starts today. Uh, if you, if you want to know where you're, uh, where you're supposed to vote in early voting, I would suggest going to voteannette.com, sending her an email and, uh, and asking her. And you're on, you're on Facebook and, and social media as well. So, yeah, just Annette Begner, that's B E G N E R.
Yeah, it's my personal Facebook page and I post things on there. So if they want to know any truth about me or what I stand for, they can go to my Facebook page and see those things or go to my website and get the correct information.
There, yeah, there you go. Because there is a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of rumor mill gossip that happens with that, you know, that, that's what happens when you get involved in politics. Unfortunately, there are people out there who, well, they decide, we don't like you and then they create a narrative around just that as the core nugget, you know, it's, it's, and it's crazy stuff. Like you said, it's never about your policy. It's not about anything. It's about rumor mill gossip and nonsense. Um, can you just, you know, for, for everybody's sake, um, the, the nonsense, uh, or well, I don't want to say that part, say it that way. Uh, the rumors that a, uh, that a couple of people who are also running for office have, have been, uh, putting out there about you. have have been uh putting out there about you. Um. And do you, I I I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, claiming that you have had an affair with an elected official and
Oh, we're going there, huh?
Yeah, we we've got, I mean, we've really
Cory.
I I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but the the, you know, there there are people who
Nonsense, Cory. It's nonsense and they're lies. And all these people are trying to do is take my campaign down. They don't want me to get in there. And the question is, why?
Yeah.
Why don't they want me to get in there? What are they afraid I'm gonna expose? That's the question.
Well, that's all we needed to hear is that it's it's lies. And I
And I'm tired of it.
I'm telling, I I'm I'm tired of it too, because I, because for those out there, like, I know the truth about those, that situ- the the whole situation, and the fact that this clown uh and I'm, anybody in James Island and that whole district is getting mailers about that clown right now. Um, which is great, because they need to know who he is.
I know nothing about all that.
No, no, of course, yeah. And and but I I've seen a couple of them. And the the fact of the matter is, when when people resort to that level, uh it's it's because it's because they can't hit you on anything else, so they have to lie.
Exactly.
Um, and it's and it's a damn shame that that's happened to you, and I'm sorry that that's happened to you. And it seems like it only happens to women who are running too. Have you ever noticed that?
I I have noticed.
I've never seen a man at, running as a candidate, being taken down because of just some random rumor from some random person who's not involved in the situation, just making it up. I've never seen it happen to a man.
People are tough on women in politics.
It's it's, that's very, very much the case. Well, you know, I'm sorry I had to bring that up, but I think it's it's, it needs to be said, like
I just know that our voters are smart enough to see through this, and they can see that this is clearly a smear campaign.
Yes, it's nonsense.
How do I go from being a respected person to suddenly just being this monster?
With these same people, like begging to be in pictures with you, by the way.
Right?
You know what I mean?
I know.
It's it's nonsense, absolute, absolute nonsense. Well, you know, thank, thank you, Annette, for for joining us today and and giving us more insight into what you want to do as a cand- a- a- as as an elected official in uh city council, District twelve. Uh, go, definitely go to 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 her website, vote Annette dot com. That's A N N E T T E dot com. And check out what she stands for, what she wants to do. Ask her questions, ask her questions, guys. We'll be back in just a couple of minutes with uh, we're gonna talk about the No Kings, uh the No Kings Rally. We've got some clips from interviews that I did there. It was uh, it was quite an event, for sure, up in North Charleston. We'll see you guys in just a minute.
Tired of shirts that say nothing? At ShopTruthTeas dot com, we say everything but satire, sarcasm, and bold pro-freedom designs that get people talking. And the best part? Every tee, lady's v-neck and hoodie are one hundred percent made in the USA. Premium fabric, very comfortable, and unapologetically American. ShopTruthTeas dot com is a family-owned pro-America business focused on wearable truth. Order now at ShopTruthTeas dot com. That's ShopTruthTeas dot com. Use promo code CoryAllen for fifteen percent off.
For nearly fifty years, the Real Estate School of South Carolina has helped launch thousands of real estate careers. Founded by Charles Brown and carried forward by Chip Brown, our legacy continues, now with a fresh look and even more ways to learn. Choose in-person, virtual, or self-paced classes, all with top instructors and the most complete study package anywhere. Visit realestateschoolofsc dot com and start your real estate journey today.
Looking for a Realtor who gets it done and actually answers her phone? Meet Christie Gore with Realtor One Group Coastal. Christie is a tri-county top producer. She works hard, keeps you informed, and knows the Charleston tri-county markets inside and out. From Dorchester to Berkeley and everywhere in between, she's helping you buy and sell residential homes with confidence. When other agents let calls go to voicemail, Christie's picking up and already finding your next home. So don't wait. Call eight four three nine nine eight eight two five zero, or go online to christiescoastalhomes dot com, where local experience meets real results.
All right, guys, we are back with uh Palmetto Talk Live. We just had Annette Begner in. And uh go to vote Annette dot com. That's uh vote A N N E T T E dot com. Especially in, if you're in James Island, District twelve, in the city of Charleston. Caroline Parker is currently the uh, is the, is the current city councilwoman there. She decided not to run again. And she has endorsed Annette. There are two other people running, but their names don't matter. Just know that one of them is, well, both of them are like far left, and one of them is actually the wife of the former Democrat Party chairman. And we all know who the current Democrat Party chairman is, Thomas Dixon. So we all know that anybody who's running the Charleston County Democrat Party is beyond liberal, beyond Democrat, far, far left, like dangerously left. Um. So if, you know, if you're married to that guy, you're uh probably not gonna do what's best for the people. Um, especially the people of James Island, uh which is definitely a conservative area. And I think that it's very important that you guys vote for uh the only Republican. I don't do uh endorsements. Uh, but that is the only Republican running, and everyone else has already done the endorsements. So uh, interestingly, we're gonna talk a little bit about the No Kings protest, the No Kings Rally that was held uh all over the country this year. I've seen on the left side of media, people talking about seven million people um showing up across the country, but then, but then I saw that like MSNBC was using video footage from like rallies in twenty seventeen and claiming that they were happening in, at like, right, like currently this Saturday. So uh some of the more reasonable uh estimates are in the six hundred and fifty thousand to two million range. It's hard to know. It's hard to know. Uh, it's hard to tell because there are just so many people lying out there, but I do know one th- excuse me, I do know one thing. We were at the, well, I drove by the Somerville one on my way out to the North Charleston uh event. And the the people, well, first off, I think it's very interesting that uh right as this event was happening, uh they the report came out that George Soros' Open Foundation, uh Open Society's Foundation uh and and other groups run by George Soros had given three, up to three trillion dollars to groups like Indivisible. Uh, and and Indivisible was one of the main groups putting the No Kings Rally on, both this time and last time, actually. So I thought that that was very interesting, that that came out as we have this massive, what they want you to believe is a um uh groundswell of um of grassroots support, right? They want you to believe that this is a a groundswell of grassroots support that only took three trillion dollars from George Soros himself to create. And George Soros, of course, we know, he's made his mul- multitude of uh billions of dollars and apparently trillions of dollars, when you look into his foundations, from uh by, well, how did he start out? Well, he started out by helping Nazis confiscate their uh confiscate the wealth of Jews. That's how he started his life. That's how he started gaining his fortune. This George Soros, this this darling of the left. Um, and then he shorted the British pound, screwing them over hardcore. Uh, and I'm not an expert in uh currency manipulation and currency trading, but I do trust the people uh who have documented this, and I trust George Soros himself because he talks about how proud he is of doing that. Uh, he also says he has no regrets about stripping the wealth from Jews during uh World War Two on behalf of the Nazis. That's very interesting to have a guy like that be the, the key backer in these protests, these No Kings protests, where all these people are calling everybody Nazis. And I was even called a Nazi a couple of times this weekend by uh people in North Charleston. Uh, well, you know, the people who did, so there's five oh five oh one. I know that's a stupid name, but that's the name. Five zero five zero one is one of the groups that's putting, that put this on. Indivisible is another. Uh, and I walked around and you can, you, I livestreamed the whole thing, so you can see all that on my profile uh at Cory Allen on Facebook, uh or search the Overton Report and I'll pop up, or hashtag Palmetto Talk Live. So I was walking around and the the people who had held the event in North Charleston, they held it on uh the corners of Ashley Phosphate and Dorchester Road. Um, they said that the reason that they were holding it there was because uh there's a a larger Hispanic community, uh or illegal immigrant community on Ashley Phosphate. They're not wrong in saying that. That is absolutely true, um which is why it's strange. I've never seen any ICE vehicles on Ashley Phosphate Road. But they said that they held it there because they wanted to be in solidarity, solidarity with the illegal immigrants. Um. And I found that quite interesting, because we played a game called Where's Juan? And where's Juarez? And where's Jose? Uh, and where's Miguel? And I was there for an hour, live streaming, walking in the crowd, joining in their chants. Of course, you know, they would chant things like, this is what democracy looks like. And I'd say uh, the popular vote's what democracy looks like. And they would get a little upset at me for uh changing the words, but we didn't see, I don't know, none of us saw any Hispanic people there. It was all white liberals, all white liberals, mostly white liberal women, mostly in their sixties, seventies, and even eighties. That's just who it was. That's just who was here. But we did do a couple of interviews and I wanted to play uh a few clips from these interviews uh from at least one, one of these interviews today. We'll get into the others tomorrow. I saw somebody uh holding a uh, nobody is illegal on stolen land. And of course, it was a white liberal woman with a uh septum piercing. Make of that what you will, but this is what, yeah, I I I just, I want you to hear some of this stuff and we'll kinda, we'll do some commentary, we'll talk about it, yeah? All right.
So is it, no one is illegal on stolen land. Can you talk to me a little bit about what you mean by that?
So my best friend, her father was just deported, a business owner, a good
He was aborted?
Yes, he was deported. He had his visa. They would not let him reinstate his visa at Miami means, and it ended up in him getting deported. I truly believe that no one is illegal on stolen land. We can, we took this land from the native people. I believe that obviously their super regulations are coming into this country, but I do believe that
How, can can I ask you, do you know, um how long had he been here?
For years.
Like, like, years and years and years?
He's twenty-five years old. You know, he
Was she born here?
She was born in Nigeria, but she has a dual citizenship. They came down here to run from child marriage and and things of that sort and opposing countries. Um, but they came here to live a successful life, bring their kids into an amazing country, and they did just that, and this country is now upholding that idea of freedom.
So what, so uh he had lived here for decades and he had never uh tried to actually become a citizen? Is that or, or, or you're not sure? Yeah, of course.
This is not my story, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so he had lived here for decades and uh he had never tried to become a citizen? Oh, well, well, I don't know. Right, you don't know. And and that's kind of the problem, right? These these anecdotes, these anecdotes are uh kinda useless, right? Uh, so here you have a man, and and we found out later, actually, the woman, and and we'll talk about, uh we'll bring her more into this. Uh, because the the Nigerian, she was actually born here, his daughter. She she is a citizen because she was born here. He had refused to get his documentation. He wanted to remain on a visa, be and travel back and forth from Nigeria, and uh never bothered until very, very recently. And at that point, it was kinda too late. His visa had run out, actually. And um, you know, that that's, that's a very different thing than well, he was trying to get his citizenship. He had been here for over twenty-five years, maybe thirty years. And had never tried to get his citizenship until it became the thing that he needed to do uh in order to not be deported. Well, it should have always been the thing that he needed to do, to not get deported. To live here for thirty years as an, as an illegal, allowing your visa to expire, why am I supposed to feel bad? Okay? And that still doesn't answer the no one is illegal on stolen land. So let's uh, you know, let's continue with this.
Do you think that if we, so so you're an American citizen born in America? So do you, uh so let me ask you this. If if you were to uh go to, say, uh Germany, right? For a better life, right? A lot of people are saying like, America's kinda creeping us out, we need to leave. If you were to go to
Leave America?
Well, sure, but if if you, if you were to, let's say, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna get out, I'm gonna go to another country, let's just use Germany as an example. Do you think that they should allow you to to stay there and remain there? Or should they enforce their
I do, there should be regulations, just to keep things like sex traffickers and murderers and things of that such. Now, I I do have a very open mind when it comes to that, but I believe the way that they're handling things is completely, completely wrong. We are built on the idea of freedom. We're building the, the idea of freedom of speech, the right to bear arms.
Well, and borders, right?
And borders, yeah.
So I don't understand, I guess that that, I I'm I'm trying to square that with no one's illegal on stolen land, and
Yeah. So so these people, look, and you know, this is a younger lady. Um, I don't necessarily blame her for being brainwashed. I blame those who brainwashed her. But it's strange to me how, and and I, and I've noticed this every single time, when you, when you have somebody who says things like uh no one is illegal on stolen land, uh or or open borders. I've noticed this every single time when you ask them, okay, well, let's say that I, just living here, I wanna illegally cross into some European country, or any country. I wanna illegally go to South Korea or Japan and just stay there, get a job, be paid, not pay the taxes. I just wanna go there. Should I be allowed to? And every single time, they say, well, no. They have a right to their country. They have a right to their borders, and they still don't see the disconnect. But they still say no one is illegal on stolen land. She admits it there. She says it right there. And that's why I wanna have these conversations. That's why I beg Democrats to come and sit in that seat right there. That's why I ask them. That's why. Every single time, uh they say, no. They say, no. Uh, but I would love to. Let's, let's continue.
So if no one is illegal on stolen land, does that mean that, for example, we're on the property of a bank right now? Do they not actually own that property? Is that not theirs? Uh, can 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 people just take that over if they say, well, my my family lived here for three generations, you bought it from us, but we decide we want it back. Now we're gonna take it over? Does that, so property pri- property rights?
Cancel. I think it's circumstantial. I think that's how you look at the saying, no one is illegal on stolen land. I do completely believe that it's circumstantial. Um, but I also believe that what ICE is doing is not okay. Um.
Like deport, the deporting all, the illegal immigrant sector?
Deportation of like, ob- obviously, it's like a double-edged sword. Do you see
Sure. Well, I I I wanna, I I wanna understand.
I do want to understand. Uh, this is me again, uh speaking with people at the No Kings Rally. Uh, giving, doing an interview with a girl who had, on one side of her, uh, on one side, she, uh of her plasterboard, she had, no one is illegal on stolen land. And I was trying to hammer her down on what that actually means. Um, now, it's, no one is illegal on stolen land, but it is circumstantial, and yes, you know, you can't take over the the property that we were on, which is owned by a bank. You can't do that. that we were on, which is owned by a bank. You can't do that. But no one is illegal on stolen land unless it's an American who wants to illegally immigrate to Germany. So do you see, when you try and hammer these things down, it really, it really starts to make less and less sense the further you go. And I think that these conversations are very important, guys. Um, I think that they're very, very important to have with these people. I haven't even gotten halfway through this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and play, uh, play our ads one more time. Uh, these people support us, and we need you to support them. Uh, go to ShopTruthTeas.com right now. Put in, uh, Cory Allen, C-O-R-E-Y-A-L-L-E-N, one word. You'll get fifteen percent off. Made in the, made in the USA. Unisex and, men's and unisex t-shirts, women's v-necks, um, uh, hoodies from both men and women, unisex, uh, made in America. Really cool, really cool products, guys. Uh, we've got some that are, that are coming in for me to wear, so you can see some, some of the, uh, options that they have, but there are countless options. Go there, Cory Allen, fifteen percent off. Um, also, the, uh, uh, the realestateschoolofsc.com. If, if you want to become a real estate agent, that's the place to go. They're based right, right, right there in Lexington, South Carolina. Uh, and of course, Christie Gore, uh, christiescoastalhomes.com. These people are supporting us. We have more sponsors in the works. We just haven't made their, uh, ads yet. But these guys are among the people who support conservative ideals and conservative issues in South Carolina. Uh, we'll be back in just a couple of minutes to, um, to close this out, man, and, uh, maybe play a couple more clips from my discussions. I was only called a Nazi like three times, though, so I count that as a win. And nobody chased me off the streets, and I wasn't threatened with arrest like at the last No Kings Rally. Anyway, we'll see you in a second.
Tired of shirts that say nothing? At ShopTruthTeas.com, we say everything with satire, sarcasm, and bold pro-freedom designs that get people talking. And the best part? Every tee, lady's v-neck and hoodie are one hundred percent made in the USA. Premium fabric, very comfortable, and unapologetically American. ShopTruthTeas.com is a family-owned pro-America business focused on wearable truth. Order now at ShopTruthTeas.com. That's ShopTruthTeas.com. Use promo code CORYALLEN for fifteen percent off.
For nearly fifty years, the Real Estate School of South Carolina has helped launch thousands of real estate careers. Founded by Charles Brown and carried forward by Chip Brown, our legacy continues, now with a fresh look and even more ways to learn. Choose in-person, virtual, or self-paced classes, all with top instructors and the most complete study package anywhere. Visit realestateschoolofsc.com and start your real estate journey today.
Looking for a Realtor who gets it done and actually answers her phone? Meet Christie Gore with Realty One Group Coastal. Christie is a tri-county top producer. She works hard, keeps you informed, and knows the Charleston tri-county markets inside and out. From Dorchester to Berkeley and everywhere in between, she's helping you buy and sell residential homes with confidence. When other agents let calls go to voicemail, Christie's picking up and already finding your next home. So don't wait. Call eight four three nine nine eight eight two five zero, or go online to christiescoastalhomes.com, where local experience meets real results.
We're back with more Palmetto Talk Live. Once again, here's Cory Allen.
All right, guys, we're back.
Back with more Palmetto Talk
For just a couple of minutes, we're gonna fix that tomorrow, by tomorrow, I promise you. That's not gonna happen again. Uh, we are back, and guys, uh, remember, anything you missed today, you can catch hashtag Palmetto Talk Live on Facebook. We're gonna be posting this on YouTube as soon as we're done, so trying to work out the livestream there. Uh, YouTube, at Overton Report. Uh, and we'll be changing that also to Palmetto Talk Live today. So, uh, yeah, we were at the No Kings Rally. The No Kings, uh, Rally was very interesting, and I want you to hear just a couple of more things, uh, that we discussed. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and listen.
Because we have, you know, Obama deporting three million people, being declared the deporter-in-chief, uh, more people than Donald Trump has deported at, at L, right? Um, so I'm trying to understand the difference between Obama putting those kids in the cages, which, I don't know if you knew that, but those pictures of kids in cages were from the Obama administration, right? Uh, deporting three million people, no issue, but, but now that it's somebody maybe that certain people don't like, deporting less people is ten times more egregious. So I'm trying to understand that
Now, I have my own feelings about Donald Trump. I'm gonna be honest with you. Like, I, I don't know how to word it in the best way. I have my own feelings, because, uh, my grandfather's a Republican, my dad's a Republican, very conservative. I come from a machine-driven background. Uh, but I have my own ideas. I have my own
Of course.
And I believe that although some of the stuff I do agree with, a lot of the stuff that I don't, and to keep it a hundred percent honest with you, like, I only know what I've learned from my own knowledge, if that makes sense. And the whole reason I'm here is to support my best friend.
Sure. So, well, then I guess, I, I, so just to bring it back, last, last question. No one is illegal on stolen land. So does that mean, the, when, when you say things like that, do you mean that only to, uh, or, or to, to refer to America? Uh, or do you mean that in, I, I mean, England, where the Celts lived there, and then they were taken over by the Anglos, and then the Saxons? Or do you, do you, or, or are you specifically just talking about no one's illegal in America specifically? And, uh, because, because if you, if you understand, like, and then, and then which tribe? Which, which native tribe? And if nobody's illegal on stolen land, then when the Cherokees stole from the Sioux, or when the Sioux stole from, from the Cherokees, which tribe does it belong to? And, and if we're talking about people coming from other nations, Central, South America, to North America, I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, is that colonialism? Are they colonializing the United States of America by coming here from other lands? And, and why shouldn't we protect our borders in that case?
Well, see, I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest with you. I don't know enough knowledge to speak on that.
Sure.
And isn't that always a thing? I don't know enough knowledge to speak on that. I think that that is, if there's anything you take away from the No Kings Protest and the No Kings Rallies that were happening across the country yesterday, or, I'm sorry, on Saturday, day before yesterday, it is that, "I don't know enough knowledge to speak on that, truthfully." That is what you should take away. Because, look, why do we, as Americans, have to allow illegal immigrants, non-citizens, to come to our country from other countries and steal this land? Why are we required to provide them with Medicare and Medicaid that the nation has shut down right now? Because one side of the aisle is demanding that we allow, uh, Medicaid subsidies that go to illegal immigrants and non-citizens. Why are we required to allow that? Why? Answer me the question. Why are we required? Why are we required, as Americans, red, black, blue, green, purple, Jewish, Muslim, the Great Spaghetti Monster, Christian, Catholic, whatever the case? Why are we required to allow people who despise our nation to come in first, take it over? And why are we required to pay for their healthcare, to the point where, where one side of the aisle, the Democrats, will shut our entire government down to force us into that position? Why? Why? That's the question. Why? Why do they require this of us? All of us, all of us Americans? Guys, we got a great week for you with Palmetto Talk Live. Thank you so much for tuning in. We will, uh, yeah, it's nine o'clock, so we will see you next time around. We'll see you tomorrow, uh, right here, eight o'clock in the morning. Anything you missed, you can catch on the replay about two minutes after this, uh, uh, this livestream ends. You'll be able to go back, share it with your friends. Send me a message, palmetto talk live at gmail dot com. Tell me what you want me to talk about. Uh, yeah, this week, we've got, we've got state reps coming in. We've got, uh, man, I'm, I'm not even gonna look. We're out of time. We've got, we've got, we've got a great week for you. We'll talk to you guys soon. Uh, yeah, see you tomorrow.